Aloha, everyone. Looks like we're at about 6:01 PM. So I'm going to start off our Thursday, September 21st, 2023 regular meeting of the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Neighborhood Board. Few things I wanted to remind people of because I think it might be applicable today. The rules of speaking is if you'd like to speak, please do raise your hand. You can use the raise hand function on WebEx. Or if you're here in person, please wait, raise your hand. We just came back to being in person recently. So please be aware, I'm used to looking at a computer screen. So feel free to put some energy into the wave and I will give you attention. If you're on WebEx and you're on your phone or you just don't know how to use the raise hand function, when I call for public comments, in that case, feel free to unmute yourself and address me and then I may recognize you at that time. We give up to three minutes to speak. We think that's really valuable for people getting insights. Reminder, you don't have to use the whole three minutes and I do sometimes. If you don't, I might recognize you again later. All right. With that, I'm going to recognize the City and County of Honolulu Monthly Report, starting with the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have a representative this evening?
Hi, how's it going?
Aloha.
All right. Sharing the monthly statistics for August for Engine 3 Makiki Fire Station. We responded to two structure fires, two wildland or brush fires, two nuisance fires, and eight activated fire alarms where there was no fire found. We responded to 136 medical calls, three motor vehicle collisions with a pedestrian, and seven motor vehicle collisions. The fire safety tip for the month is all about evacuation planning. In the event of an emergency, be prepared with an evacuation plan. Create your plan with all members of your family or household. Keep in mind those with limited abilities, children, elderly, and pets. Identify possible exits and escape routes. Predetermine a safe meeting place. Always choose the escape route that is safest. Think about various scenarios and strategize how to use them. Review and practice the plan often. Assemble an emergency supply kit. Remember to pack important documents, medicines, and necessary pet items. Remember to stay calm, stay informed, and stay alert. For more information, visit fire.honolulu.gov. That's it.
Very much your report. I meant to say this a little earlier. We do only have one business item on the agenda this evening. It's related to the potential action, the intersection of Prospect and Ala Pae. We're having Councilmember Tam join us then. I know some board members are joining us at 6:30. So I'm aiming for us to get to that agenda item by 6:30 today. Just want to give everyone the heads up. Do we have any questions from the board for the Fire Department at this time? Okay, so no questions from the board. Do we have any questions from any other attendees at this time? I recognize Tom Heinrich. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening firefighter. Just wanted to make a real quick comment and question. The question is, I heard that about a week and a half ago or so, there was a small fire up on Round Top Drive by Manoa Overlook. I don't know the details of that. But Representative Della Bellotti's office, we have received seriously seven or eight calls in the last couple of weeks by folks of various age with really kind of a hypersensitivity now to wildfires and some of the difficulties in certain areas along Punch Bowl, Crater Rim with the dryness, that kind of stuff, as well as Maoka of Papakolea. One person who called just the other day was especially concerned about some illegal aerial fireworks that had been set off. We know the drill. But just wanted to make that, if there's anything else that might be added on the Manoa Overlook area fire. But Chair and HFD, if there's a best way perhaps to, in the next several months, try to coordinate, say, a brief presentation on wildfire concerns in the area. I know the elected officials for the region are looking into the possibility of doing perhaps even a community meeting on that. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do you have any response for that at this time?
I mean, I wasn't sure there was a question for me there. But I actually did respond to that, that fire that I believe you're talking about on Round Top. There's actually leftover trees that were cut up and placed on the side. And not sure how it ignited because there were lots of dried leaves around and so forth. So it could have been accidental, could have been malicious. But fortunately, it wasn't directly next to any structures. So no structures were threatened by it and we were able to successfully extinguish it.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to recognize Claire Santos at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you firefighter. I just want to thank HFD. I did make a call to you folks Sunday evening. We have a neighbor on Ala Pae Street who repeatedly does open flame burning right next to their house. There's about three houses on a lot. They were built in the 1930s. They were termite eaten and patched together. So they're little tinderboxes. And this person insists on having open flame burning of quote unquote kindling. And we all know it takes one ember to fly and start trouble elsewhere. So speaking as a former burn unit nurse married to a firefighter, these kinds of things are on my mind. So I want to thank you folks for coming by with the truck and talking with them. And I hope there was a positive outcome. We did all have smoke again two nights later. So we're suspicious. Is there a better course of action than calling dispatch to go and extinguish them?
Sorry, sirens around the area. As far as I know, I mean, you know, calling for an emergency response, anytime you see smoke, flames, anytime you think there might be a fire around, even if it's probably just your neighbor or something, it's always better to be safe, be cautious and, you know, we'll show up and make sure that nobody's in danger.
Thank you firefighter. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. All right, I don't see any other hands raised at this time. So thank you very much for your report and for answering the questions.
Take care.
All right, we're going to move on to HPD.
Good evening, everyone. Lieutenant Segusio from Honolulu Police Department. I represent District 1, Community Area of Responsibility. Thank you guys for your time and patience. If you guys want more specific information, you guys can go to the public website at HPD, www.honolulupd.org. I'm going to go real quick. Specifics for this month of August 2023. The statistics are it's going to be motor vehicle thefts are nine. From the previous month was 10. Burglaries were four, so they're down from the previous month of 11. Thefts is 38, previous was 36. U M Vs or car break-ins was 15, which is also down from 22. Assaults is 15, previous was seven, so it's up on that one. Six assaults is three, previous month was zero. Graffiti was one, previous month was zero. Drug offenses is four, previous month was two. Total cost per service for your guys' group is 2,519 calls compared to the previous month of 2,209. There are no criminal breaches at this point in time to be concerned about. I just wanted to relay that the month of September is National Suicide Prevention Month. Please let us be aware of signs of depression and take notice of life triggers that may cause someone to hurt themselves. I posted several numbers on the chat for everyone to see and take down. Utilized these numbers personally in the past on the job and has provided me excellent advice and proper measures to deal with someone thinking about suicide. Safety tip for the month of September will be pedestrian safety since we just got done with the last major holiday of Labor Day and summer vacation is over, you guys. There will be more pedestrian traffic in the area of schools and bus transit areas. We're asking our community members to leave early and to avoid rushing. Rushing usually causes people to become complacent in regards to safety. Drivers also please reduce the speeds in the areas of intersections, especially during true mid-block crosswalks. At this time, I'm going to take yield back to rest of my time so I can take questions from the board and the public attendees.
Thank you very much Lieutenant. Our first question this evening is from Paul. Paul, you're recognized at this time.
Aloha, sir. Hi Lieutenant Segusio. I just want to say thank you. We had some officers go on the walk with us the other day and I've had some issues with people parking at.
Can you hear clearly?
Can you hear me okay or no? Am I being heard or no?
We can hear you.
Okay. At the intersection of Makiki and Heulu, H E U L U, we've been having consistent problems with people parking illegally at that corner. They're not being vigilant daily, but they've been much more responsive to people calling because being the president of our building, I get dozens and dozens of calls when people park there because it's so dangerous. People cannot look up Makiki and there's been multiple very, very bad accidents there because of people parking at that corner. So if we could please take a note and reinforce the vigilance at that intersection, especially on the Maoka side of that corner. But I just want to give accolades to the officers I met with. I went down there, met with the officers the other night. They were very accommodative and they explained some things to me about their ability to have discretion, but more importantly, they acted, the cars were moved. And I just want to say thank you so much on behalf of everybody in our building and at this intersection. Thank you, sir.
No problem, Mr. Klink. We'll continue to monitor that location. I know it's a hotbed of situations in regards to parking. So we'll continue to monitor and we'll cite the vehicles if they're in violation.
Mahalo.
I'm going to recognize one of the other attendees tonight. Danielle, you're recognized at this time.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to ask for clarification when you said that of the assaults. What type of assaults are these?
So the regular assault, so assault seconds, assault thirds, just usually physical bodily injury. If it gets into the felony realm, it would be something to the effect of serious bodily injury. But then there would be an assault first. But normally, these assaults are lower grades. They usually occur not necessarily in a domestic situation. Sometimes in these situations, it's like just roommates and stuff or situations at the park, other things like that, yeah. So it's just basic assaults.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious if we're walking with a stroller and somebody, you know, comes up.
All right, thank you very much.
We do have one. If we can either go now or raise hand for a later time.
Is this related to HPD?
Yes.
Please continue.
Okay.
Well, I was, I don't want to, I don't want to stir things up, but I've obviously had multiple calls with HPD about this issue. And since we have the community on this Zoom meet, I think it's appropriate to say it now. But over the past several months, there's been an excessive number of abandoned vehicle citations on vehicles on Prospect Street. And I had to get in contact with the city council about this. I would be getting abandoned vehicle notices on vehicles that I drove daily. And not just me, but other neighbors. And I think Lieutenant, you're aware of this. But I would just ask respectfully that the community, you know, realize that we all have to follow the same rules, you know? So the issue's been resolved as far as with my family, but I think other neighbors are still experiencing this on Prospect Street.
Lieutenant, before you respond, sir, could you give us your name? We take minutes and we like to know who spoke.
Yeah, my name is David.
Thank you.
I mean everything respectfully. I'm not trying to complain. I'm just, I just wanted to bring it up publicly.
Yeah, no problem, David. I mean, I totally get it in regards to getting a citation. It's kind of a pain because obviously it's monetary. However, that location that you're talking about is a very hotbed for us. A lot of stolen vehicles appear and somehow get placed in those locations. Vehicles begin to get stripped. So we tend to have our officers go and make checks during the night to verify that certain vehicles aren't being left there over a period of 24 hours, which is, you know, then now we can consider it, right? So we're supposed to be marking the vehicle, but there's several techniques of us marking vehicles. Yeah, because obviously we know that certain people know and get around these markings by just moving the vehicle several inches, yeah? So we mark it on different ways. We're not going to be discussing on how we market. But we do make diligent checks in regards to vehicles being in a particular location for more than 24 hours. It's a, it's a location that a lot of stolen vehicles end up. So that's why we're going to be over there. We're also going to be checking for expired safety check, expired registration. I mean, obviously COVID is done, so safety checks and registration should be an easy thing for us to do, yeah? And I know there was a delay in people getting their safety checks, but we've been finding vehicles at that location with safety checks and registrations expired for over a year. Yeah, so we're going to enforce not just one law, we're going to enforce them all. So I hope that answers your question, David.
Absolutely. Can I just follow with one more thing? Just to say, this was not HPD that issued this. This was complaints by neighbors to abandoned vehicles. And I had to obviously speak with HPD about it, but this was directly to the abandoned vehicles department. And also, all of my vehicles were legally tagged and fully legally registered. And my complaint to the city was primarily that the, there are, and I took pictures of over 30 vehicles on the street that had expired tags and registration and had been parked there for multiple days where my vehicles were being driven daily. So I just, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, I apologize in regards to your vehicle if it wasn't parked over there for 24 hours. But if that incident ever happens again, David, please call for a supervisor. We'll come out there, we'll go look at the citation and we'll go speak with the officer that issued the citation to verify it and make sure that we're actually citing for the right thing, yeah?
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I'm glad we, I'm glad we were able to address that. Looks like we have two more questions online. Craig Morrison?
Oh yes, good evening, everyone. How you doing?
Doing well. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you guys for putting in your time and so forth. I know it's difficult. So I'm new to the community. I am a resident manager here at Fountains at Makiki at 1433 Kiwalla Street. I've been doing property management now for about 15 years of various buildings all around the islands. And I'm taking over from my predecessors regarding the constant incidents, the constant noise complaints from 1332 Luna Lilo Street. It's absolutely ridiculous that I, and this is a question for Lieutenant also, and I'd be more than welcome to meet with someone to discuss this because it seems like this has been a history with this property that butts against Fountains at Makiki. Constant P A system, loud noise, speaking through a microphone. And I called dispatch and I've been blessed with some nice dispatch people that actually send out police. But I also been told they can make as much noise as they want until 10:00 PM, which I think is absolutely ridiculous considering, you know, we can't enjoy anything on this side of the building. There's trash littered all around that property, multiple abandoned vehicles. I have personally called the owner, Ms. Grace Lee, multiple times. And her excuse is, I can't handle my tenants. Could you go over and talk to them? It's not my property, it's not my tenant. I love living here, but at the same token, I mean, it's almost every night. It's, we pretty much have to put the A C on, have to shut all the windows. Nobody in my community can go down and enjoy the pool downstairs or anything because from 8:00 AM on a Sunday, so people get out of work, it's just bass booming, loud P A system music. And it's, I get it noise, I get music, but what can we do about this? Because this has kind of been a history with these two properties. And I'm not telling other people how to live, but with what kind of Calvin Seays said, without obnoxious noise, I totally would think that would be absolutely obnoxious. They throw trash on that property over the fence and, you know, people sleeping on the lanai's, it's ridiculous. And it's constant noise, guys. So I just wonder what can we do as a community so others around it can enjoy living in this community, you know, and kind of go forth from that?
Well, let me answer the legality side of that question, yeah? So in regards to the noise, right? I mean, it is true that we kind of give a gray spirit up to 10 because normally that's when usually parties occur and stuff like that. But if the noise is unreasonable, right? I mean, it could be even midday. If they've got a P A and it's so, so loud, even though it's during the midday, we're going to tell them to turn it off and stuff like that. So in regards to that location, it's another location in your guys' area that we get sent to a lot. We get sent to that location for all kinds of stuff. In fact, Danielle's question in regards to the assaults, I would say some of those assaults or majority of those assaults are coming out of that location, yeah? So we can almost say that that problem, that location is a problem. Now, the non-legality side that we cannot control is we need to speak to our constituent, this Ms. Grace Lee, in regards to her tenants, right? I mean, I don't think it's a right statement for her to say that she has no control over her tenants, right? I mean, she's the one that allowed them to move in and she's taking the rent from them. So I mean, that's a question that this community's got to bring up with her. But if there's any type of violations or criminality at that location, sir, please continue to call. We'll go over there and handle it the best we can, yeah?
No, thank you. And I totally understand about, you know, people making noise here and there, but it's a daily and nightly routine. I mean, I've been talking to realtors that try to sell in my building and hardly anybody will buy on this side of the building because of that property. The reason what it is, like all the emails and there's such a thick history between these two properties and this Ms. Grace Lee that, you know, I have heard blood curdling screams at like 2:00 AM of like someone beating up a woman from that property. And, you know, I have a teenage daughter and, you know, my wife. And we're just like, wow, you know, and I love living in this building. I love managing it. I've got a great community of owners here. It's a little hidden gem on Kiwalla Street. So I just want to try to figure out, you know, what, I mean, I understand making the noise at 2:00 or whatever, but when it's from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, it starts back up again at 7:00 till 10:00 PM and you've got three different kinds of noises coming, one from like minivan, one from a unit, one from another unit. And it's just, it's just, it's just like, and I understand, but what is it that you think we can do? Do I just keep calling HPD and kind of having you guys go down there twice, three times a day? I hate to keep doing that.
You know, that's one of those things, right? I mean, if there's criminality over there, the noise is getting excessive. Just continue to call. We'll go and try to address it as best we can. I'll try to make, see if I can try to make some contact with Ms. Grace Lee and try to see if we can get some resolution from her in regards to future tenants to that location, right? So I mean, that's the best we can do, yeah?
Yeah, I understand. I mean, I emailed her and she doesn't know what to do. I'm like, well, then hire private, hire security and have a security over there and try to police her tenants, but that's money. So I don't think she wants to spend that. Okay, no, I appreciate your time. I thank you for all you guys, what you do and your time and so forth. You know, I want to try to nip this in the bud for my community, but also the surrounding others to see what can be done. But I guess just got to kind of keep rolling with the punches and keep calling, I guess.
And thank you, Craig. Please send me an email follow-up as well. And we're going to move on with additional questions.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Tom Heinrich, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Just to add on to what Paul Klink was speaking of a few moments ago about parking concerns, that kind of stuff at Heulu and Makiki, that general area. Just to add this comment that I got a call here at Representative Bellotti's office a couple of days ago by a gentleman who was very embarrassed and had had his vehicle towed in early morning because he was in the towaway zone, but had no clue as to how to find his vehicle. And so to summarize real quick, the easiest way to do that is, as I was told by the 911 dispatcher, was call 911, ask for police non-emergency, be able to identify, identify the vehicle, hopefully by license plate, but what it is and the registered owner. And they'll be able to locate, you know, where the vehicle was towed to. So really, it's, it's a pretty simple process. But when you first wake up early in the morning, you don't know what to do. We got the call. So police, non-emergency, and be able to identify the vehicle. So just wanted to throw that out there because you had several situations this evening already with that type of discussion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, Lieutenant, any other questions? If not, Lieutenant, thank you very much for your report and for answering our questions as always. We look forward to seeing you next month.
No problem. You guys have a great night.
So I'm inclined to continue with the City and County of Honolulu Monthly Reports with the Board of Water Supply. And there's no objections from the board. I'm going to then skip to the mayor's representative and then let us continue into unfinished business as long as our city council members will indulge us as well. Because I know a lot of people are in attendance for that reason. So I want to get us towards that, probably aiming at 8:35 or so. That's my intention. Board of Water Supply, you're recognized at this time. Would you please sit over there? Thanks for coming in person.
Aloha, everyone. Good evening. My name is Michelle Harmon. I'm your Board of Water Supply representative. So I'll send you an email all in person tonight. So for tonight, I just have an invitation. Some nice stuff tonight. Oh, you can't hear. So I just have an invitation. We have flyers on the table. We can also email you flyers for, so it's an event called the Imagine a Day Without Water Festival. It's going to be on October 21st at the Wahelewa Freshwater State Recreation Park. We are partnering with over 15 organizations. And we have interactive booths, food trucks, shave ice, native plant giveaways, rain shop, rain barrel workshops, and lots, lots more, even ginkgo balls. So it's going to be a really excellent event in celebration of keeping our one water healthy. So that includes wastewater, surface water, groundwater, ocean water. And that's all going to be on October 21st. So please join us. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Please go ahead.
Will the Navy be in attendance at the event?
Oh, that's a great question. And I haven't heard anything yet, but we can get back to you next month.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Please go ahead.
Oh, aloha.
I think this follow-up, this is the third month that I'm asking with the champ.
Oh. So there was a reply to that from Steven Norstrom. That was the leak, right, by the, by the building? Were you observing water coming up? Is, was that? Oh, oh, sorry.
Can someone please repeat the question? We couldn't hear it, please. Sure, please ask your hand. Then could you repeat it for the audience?
Oh, sure, sure, sure. Okay, so.
So my report was, so now going into the third month, I asked Board of Water Supply, I live at 922 Kenau Street. And there's a, you can see that perpendicular to Kenau Street, there's like, the street is starting to dip for every lane. So perpendicular all the way from, from one end all the way to the Academy of Parks. And so you can see the pavement or the asphalt starting to buckle. And so there's a line now. And then at the end of the line on the other side, there's a water main. So my question is, is there a leak that creates this type of bucking of the road? And maybe there's something that can be done proactively versus all of a sudden something significant happens? So again, this is the third month and I know the last time it was brought up.
Denise, did you catch that as well? We'll repeat it when you come up then. Just go ahead.
So should I? You can reply, yes. Oh, I'm, I, okay. I will have a full response for you next month. I think last month we were focused on the rates. So maybe that's why. And I think we, we thought we had answered the question, but I think maybe we kind of confused two questions for the same area. So, yeah, I have the, I have it now.
All right, any other questions at the time? Maybe from other attendees who are on board members?
Sorry, you have a follow-up question? Yes, Archie Baker Park, the pumping station, Makiki Pumping Station. All fences came down, grass looks great, thank you very much. For returning our park in full to us, the community really loves that park. So what kinds of upgrades were done to that pumping station that needed?
Okay. So this question is in regards to what upgrades have been done at Archie Baker Park? And we'll have that for you. Okay, um, so this question is in regards to what upgrades have been done at Archie Baker Park, and we'll have that for you.
Thank you. All right, uh, seeing no other questions, thank you very much for your report. We'll look forward to seeing you next time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, if there are no objections, we're going to go ahead and jump to City and County of Honolulu elected official reports. I'm going to, in this case, pardon me, uh, skip our, uh, our council members to bring them back after the unfinished business. But I would at this time like to recognize Mayor Rick, uh, Blanchardi's new representative for us from the Office of Housing Executive Director. Denise, uh, E.C. Matubara. Um, I got a little bit of a bio from her. They shared that, uh, she spent seven years at the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. She was previously a senior special assistant to Governor David Ege. And she's a graduate of the University of Hawaii with both a bachelor's in, uh, business administration and a master's in public administration. I've been assured by her staff, she stays late, works hard, and we're very lucky to have her, uh, joining us as the mayor's representative. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Aloha. Good evening, everyone. Denise Sari Matubara. I'm the executive director for the Office of Housing. I know this, that we don't have a mic for speakers, so can you all hear me? Cannot hear? Oh, okay. I'm going to try and step it up a couple notches. Is that better? Better? Okay. So for the mayor's report, um, from his newsletter, the mayor announced a new liquor commissioner. His name is Sal Patilos. He's a longtime industry leader with years of hands-on experience. Um, the mayor has also followed through on a decades-old promise to redevelop the historic Verona Village in Eva Beach. This was a promise made over three decades ago to plantation workers out in Eva when the sugar plantation closed. This mayor has worked very hard to start that process and start beginning rehabilitating and then building new housing. So it's just a start. Peter Savio will be the developer, uh, in partnership with the Habitat for Humanity. Uh, next up from our human resources, it's the second year in a row that Forbes has distinguished the city. Among America's best employers by the state ranked number three in Hawaii. So for, uh, for homeowners, uh, Budget and Fiscal Service Real Property Tax Divisions. Wants to let homeowners know about the Real Property Tax Credit Program. Uh, and the action that was taken by city council to increase the income limit. For this program from sixty thousand to eighty thousand dollars a year. So this additional span allows more homeowners to take, um, take advantage of this credit. The deadline, um. I know that there's a deadline for filing is October second. For more information, please see realpropertyhonolulu.com. Okay, and then I have some follow-ups from the last meeting. I know there was another representative here. But this, um, body did ask for the process, um, to bring up concerns. On how residents can report areas that need maintenance. And so the response that we got from our Department of Facilities Management is use your three one one app. Or you can email our facilities management department at DRMroads@Honolulu.gov. The other item for follow-up was from our Department of Transportation Services. Uh, there was a request on an update on the usage of the bike lane on Pensacola Street. Uh, the city is required to consider safety of all modes of transportation per the Complete Streets Ordinance. That was passed by city council in two thousand twelve. According to DTS, the protected bike lane on Pensacola has an average of two hundred twenty-five daily users. Also from DTS, uh, there was a request for them to conduct a traffic study in this area on. Let's see, on Thurston Street, there was a request, I think from the past meeting. The response from DTS was that the location is a little too general. They're unable to conduct that investigation for a crosswalk or a speed bump on Thurston Avenue without a specific location. So it sounds like they need a specific address, if you would like that study. So if you could get that.
Do you have the name of the person you asked that?
There, they did not.
Um, did you give a little bit of a break? Was that the good time or shall we wait till then?
So, thank you for getting back to me, sir. As far as the bike lane, okay, my understanding was that there was a threshold that the bike lane needs to meet.
I see.
To, to justify it being there. So I would like to know exactly what that threshold is. And if this two hundred and twenty-five riders per day meets that threshold. I've had numerous residents tell me that it's hardly used, and I lived there too. And people even outside of our district noticed it. It's hardly used. So, um, and, and again, um, I'm not against, you know, being environmentally friendly and environmentally friendly. Uh, I just need to know that, you know, meets the threshold. If it's not, then maybe we should look at turning it back to regular streets.
It's another lane of, of traffic, right?
Then as far as the, um, crosswalk on Thurston, if you go from, um. So I was opening the door and just a small, oh, change, I'm sorry, from Green Street to Pensacola, it's completely. I mean, there's no barrier, I mean, no speed bump, no crosswalks or anything, so it's not a specific area.
Okay.
Just looking at that whole area and seeing, because there's a lot of speeding as far as residents tell me there. And this, and they're concerned about that, more of a safety item.
Okay, so let me see if I heard you correctly. You really want to look at a study to investigate from Green Street all the way to Thurston? Is that what you're looking at?
It's a straight shot all the way up.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I don't want to take you out of that many more than time than I'll just end right there. Thank you.
Was there anything else in your report?
No, but I did want to let you know on the record, I did put in a request to get someone from DTS. Because I know you have a really important, uh, safety issue you want to bring up. Um, unfortunately, uh, they weren't able to send someone, but please do put in an official request. They said there's a process. Um, and then maybe we can get someone from DTS here to answer your questions. Because I see there is an important safety issue on the agenda. But thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. I still have some questions from board members and, uh, other members of the audience. Uh, any questions from board members at this time? See, now any questions for anyone in the audience? All right, I'll be it. Thank you so much. Okay, I think that will let us move on, um. To the main item on this evening's agenda. We do still have other items on the agenda. So we, I'm going to still try to keep us in order on this discussion. Uh, and come back around to other announcements and reports. But with that, I'm bringing us the item of the potential, uh, board action related to safety at the intersection of Prospect Street and Alapi. Um, there are some handouts related to some basic information that's at the, the check-in table over there. Um, I'm going to ask Logan, please link people to our Google Drive in the comments. There's a whole folder dedicated to this. This folder includes two reports from, uh, council member Santos Tam. Um, related to, uh, some like items on the history, what's going on there. We also have testimony submitted by residents from around that area that are typed up. And I even included the copy of this handout, uh, in there. Uh, furthermore, you know, we, I want to stress there's a number of potential actions this board could choose to take. I went ahead and drafted two resolutions, one in support of the city's movement towards a five-way intersection. And one opposed. I did my best to do some research and make them cohesive and being pretty decent, uh, resolutions overall. If there are just some basic typos, when we have a motion, we can always motion to allow amendments just for consistency style grammar, et cetera. So that shouldn't be a huge holdup. I don't want to spend twenty minutes being wordsmiths. But I also want to highlight, these aren't the only two options. So if the board wants to go a different way, that's a possibility. Uh, with that, I wanted to see if, because we don't have DTS here. If anyone from, uh, council member Telo de Santos Tam's office is here to maybe quickly give us a little bit of the background again. And where the city's at and the funding's at on this. Um, council member, I'm happy to see that you're here with us this evening. Thanks for joining us.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, as Chair Ross alluded to, I'm happy to report. That there is funding for two things, uh, at this intersection. So after, uh, the accident back in January, uh, we got funding, um, federal funding for a, um. Uh, electronic feedback sign, uh, that's going to be hopefully installed on the upslope of, um, Iolani. That is the upslope and downslope of Iolani. And then, um, there's also funding for, um, uh, five-way stop. You know, stop sign installations, not super expensive when compared to other alternatives. So there is available funding for that right now. Um, so as the board deliberates, you know, if there are other ideas that, um, board members have. Or maybe other preferences, um, it comes with a caveat that there may not be funding for those options. We may have to wait, uh, a year or two years or three years or more, uh, for that funding to be available. But there is, uh, funding available right now, uh, for the five-way stop.
Great. Thank you very much, council member. Um, so I wanted to, if, if you have access to the drive on your phone or anything else, we do have a couple of copies of the resolutions there. Um, the in-support one does actually include, in addition to support for a five-way stop. A request for studies to look at roundabouts and similar items. I also threw in for this item, um, so I will highlight, uh, council members maybe, um, uh, too polite not to mention it. He and his staff actually joined me out on Tuesday, and we had about five of us out there, and we hung about two hundred of these up. For people in the surrounding area to try to solicit some feedback. Some people might be here this evening partially, uh, related to that. And one other item that seemed consistent, though could be removed in this discussion, is also including a speed bump, I believe, on Alapi. Was that right, council member? Was that what we were hearing? Oh, Prospect.
It was, speed bump on Prospect.
That's right. Um, I'll make sure it's there. That would be the potential inclusion of a speed bump due to speeding. So some of the feedback that we had received, even, uh, from those who are both for and against a five-way stop is, look, if someone's speeding. And doesn't want to pay attention to a stop sign, people don't pay attention to the stop sign. And the idea was it's not inconsistent to have both a stop sign and a speed bump. So currently, I believe both versions of the resolution call for that speed bump. Um. So I wanted to highlight that. That's something which can be removed, maintained. Uh, this, that would be up to the Department of Transportation Services. We were asked where would it be? My understanding is you don't put speed bumps too close to stop signs. And, um, on this case, I would note, uh, while we are deliberative body, we're not a decision-making body, so we're giving advice. So we often go a little vague here because we're not engineers. We can go specific and we can be mad about what happens and come back with a resolution later. Uh, but, uh, that was purposely left a little bit big. Here we go, infrastructure. Actually, uh, I will note that the resolution doesn't include where the speed bump would be. We actually left that one up, uh, for interpretation as well, but broadly speaking, due to the shape of the area, it would be. Um, on, uh, Prospect. Okay, um, I want to bring us into some board deliberations. Do we have any board discussion or motions at this time? Thank you very much, uh, Member Baldwin. Do we have a second for this motion? A second motion. Thank you. Okay, we're going to open up into discussion. Uh, I do see some hands up from members of the community already. So I think this is what we're going to be generally doing. I will be enforcing the three-minute maximum, uh, time limit. I will be polite, so if you hit time, I will ask you to summarize, and that means please be brief for that summary. Uh, furthermore, um, you know, yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Chair, I just want to make a recommendation that you have all the public testimony. Go first.
Yes, that's what I was going to do. Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, so we were just getting the stressing that we should do public testimony first. I'll be doing my best to take in order. If you're very brief with your comments, I will consider hearing you a second time. Uh, but if you're just about time and this is running long, there's a lot of testifiers, we might not allow for that second time. So I'm just going to be, try to be as generous as I can within the time constraints we have. So with that, I would like to recognize member, uh, sorry, uh, attendee Steven. Steven, are you there with us?
I got three minutes. Okay. Yeah, I have a suggestion in regards to along.
Would you pause for one second? I won't take this out of your time, promise. Um.
Okay.
Logan, could you turn the volume up just a little bit for us? Okay, I'm restarting your time. Please go ahead.
But yes, uh, again, my name is Stephen Courtney, and I'm a resident that lives right near that dangerous intersection. I have a suggestion along Iolani. Uh, right now, there's a yellow, single, broken line. That, um, goes up Iolani, going from Magellan to Prospect. Is there any way that could be made into a double yellow line? Because right now it gives the impression that you can speed up and go around cars along that street. And that's where, a-again, the car that had that, the, um, two vehicles had that accident. That, um, the driver was trying to pass along that, along Iolani. Again, that's my suggestion.
Steven, thank you so much. Uh, just for context, could you tell us about how close that gets to the intersection?
As far as the, um.
The, the single line is to go all the way.
Oh, it goes, it goes all, it goes all the way up from Magellan Avenue all the way up to Alapi. It's a, a broken yellow line. I mean, so that includes Pele, it goes past, uh, Miller. It's a, uh, single yellow, it's a broken yellow line, go all the way up. And again, that gives the impression that you can speed up there. If it was a double yellow line, I think it would at least give the impression that, hey, this. This needs a lot more attention regards to going a lot slower.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, uh, comments and thanks for attending.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. Uh, Claire, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming, uh, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam. I don't know what I think of the five-way stop because. I've been through them before over at Spencer Street and Green Street. They have some five ways there. And they're basically touch-and-go California stop intersections. No one actually stops. So if we did that here, I would think at the very least pedestrian safety can, would continue to be compromised. Um, I think the community was clear that we don't want flashing neon speed signs in our residential neighborhood. So why don't you take that money and put it toward the roundabout? And they didn't want the speed bump because of the noise factor. I thought DTS even said that it wasn't a good option for a residential area. Um, and the people who live at Kahale Moy are going to hear the car tires going over that speed bump incessantly because it's a busy street. So I'm still leaning on the side of a roundabout. And I thought there was money. It's apparently been re-appropriated. And I think it should be made a priority. We've had a death and we've been at this for decades trying to get this fixed. And my biggest fear is they'll do the cheap way out, five-way stop sign. And it'll take another forty years and another death or more before they do a proper mitigation at the intersection. It's a speedway because there are no street lights between Magellan and Ward Avenue. And everyone just has a field day speeding up that road. I don't really know that double line would solve anything. It's, it's a psychology more than anything. Um, and those are my thoughts. And the other thing is with a constant stop sign. During rush hour traffic, the exhaust fumes coming into our apartments can get pretty horrendous. And if we have all cars stopping and going, that's only going to get worse with the air pollution. So those are my thoughts on it, and I wish I had a more firm decision. But talking with my neighbors and such, we're not really warm on the idea of the five-way stop sign. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Claire. All right, uh, I'm going to quickly look around the room. We're not going to recognize board, or did you have a question for Claire?
No, I have something I have to add on to her.
Sure, we'll recognize you at the end of the comments. Thank you very much. And raise your hand again then. Uh, I just want to try to be able to move back and forth between in-person and online. Is there anyone in person who also wanted to testify at this time? Yeah, would you please mind coming up? I know, I know, it's, it's awful. Uh, we won't be able to project well enough for a mic that can only extend six feet, unfortunately. Uh, it would be painful for everyone in the way, unfortunately. I, I believe your abilities, though.
Yeah, it's really for the people online that, so that way they're able to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I understand the challenge on it. I apologize. In the future, I will try to have a mobile minus.
My name is Belinda Simao. And my brother and I, well, our grandparents brought the property way back in 1935. We're at 710 Prospect Street. And during the entire, we've gone through many accidents and et cetera. I have a question before we do this. Is, is there still a punch bowl special district? Or has it changed to a punch bowl historical district? Because way back in the 1980s or 70s, it became a punch bowl, either historical or special district. And the one you're talking about is Prospect and Alapi is 702, which was bought in, I don't know when, and was sold recently. And then we lived next door to 710. So we have, shall we say, a front page of accidents, people yelling, people moving back and forth, et cetera, speeding and so forth. Way back in 1970, when I went to college in the mainland, the property next door to us evidently, it's 702. The frontage was bought by the state or the city, eight feet, 10 feet, I don't know, whatever it is. And when my mother was alive, in fact, we had, they had meetings and they had people signing petitions and so forth with John Yoshimura, Quinton Quananafo, and something in the borough. And they decided that the corner of 702, which is the one that goes Alapi going down and Iolani and Prospect, people could not see the intersection because there is a telephone pole and fire hydrant, as well as a sidewalk, which doesn't really exist because people have to walk in the road to go there. So at that time, they decided that what they would do was get the wall on the corner of Prospect and Alapi. And instead of it being just, you know, just make a little curve in there and people from Alapi going down would be able to see the cars coming. Well, needless to say, that hasn't worked because we have accidents quite a bit. So whatever you decide to do, I'm 75 years old. Before I die, I hope you solve the problem. Because sometimes people come to our house and they go, what do we do? And I'm like, I have no idea. I don't work for the city or the state. But they've tried by evidently, the front portion of 702 was bought in 1970 or something. And they were going to move something, but then that didn't work because it's a telephone pole and a fire hydrant. And that would cost too much money. And then everybody in the front would have to do so many, I don't know, whatever it was.
Would you mind summarizing your remarks?
Okay, my question.
Thank you very much for your comment and for your question.
And thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your patience. So I did do a comment to the council member about the special district that seemed to be relevant. I'm not sure how to look that up. So if the council member can do that, or even Denise, if you're able to find out during the course of this, oh, sorry.
It's still, it still applies. Whether it's called a historic district or a special district, it's the same thing.
Thank you very much. Okay, continuing with the testimony, Danielle has her hand raised. Danielle, you're recognized at this time.
Hi, I just, I actually had a quick comment. I agree with what was previously said, but my, my concern is that will, I didn't read it in the the draft there, but will the sidewalk also be addressed? As previously mentioned, it's, it's pretty non-existent. So in addition to vehicular danger, also pedestrian dangers, simply because you've got speeding cars going by and yet you have to walk in the street, particularly if you're pushing a stroller. So just another thing to consider within this proposal. So that way it's not lost later on.
All right. Thank you very much, Danielle. Looking over the resolution, we do call for studies for other long-term solutions which could be factored in there. If a board member wishes, we could actually include language related to sidewalks in this or any other resolution. The word sidewalk, I don't believe actually technically occurs at any point. So thank you very much for your comment. Okay. Is there any other comments or questions from anyone else in attendance, non-board members? Okay, seeing none, we're going to open up discuss, oh, Danielle, I see your hand up again. Please continue.
Yeah, I just wanted to, this is David, her husband. I just wanted to offer this. I understand people are concerned about noise and exhaust and stopping. It seems to me to be the case, and I don't know the accident statistics, but I would suspect that the danger of that intersection is primarily because of the speeding that occurs on Iolani. And I may be wrong, but, and less due to the traffic pulling out onto Iolani from the three adjacent crossroads. So giving drivers more of a freedom of choice and slowing the traffic down. My theory is flashing yellow lights. And I know speed bumps were, you know, the concern was raised that it causes excessive noise. I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that, but I was thinking more of a speed bump like what's on the poly. But forcing the traffic that's on Iolani to slow down. But when traffic is low, they still have the ability to flow, you know? So traffic does not become congested because if you put a light in, you're going to have quite a traffic jam there. And traffic jam means exhaust, noise, et cetera. So I think giving the traffic the freedom of choice and just slowing down Iolani is probably an option to consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Okay, I believe we've had everyone who's previously raised their hand an opportunity to speak. I think you were about at two minutes before Claire, but I can recognize you for another minute if you'd like.
Thank, oh, thank you, Chair. Tagging on with Danielle and David and the lady from 710. Thank you for bringing up that moss rock wall. That, that corner of property was condemned and that wall is supposed to be set back. But the new owner, Basic Slumlord, says it's too expensive. He's not going to deal with it. So you did have a really good point there about pedestrian safety because, and driver safety because we can't see through a moss rock wall and that should have been mitigated a long time ago. The city has in the past refused to put any kind of flashing light or any other light, but I can't speak to today's city. I'm leaning more, more towards the roundabout and David, agreeing with David, it's about slowing the traffic, not stopping it and playing stop and go, which is inefficient on so many levels. So I hope you take all that information to heart. And yes, please keep pedestrian safety in mind. I have to cross that street several times a day in my fluorescent jacket. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Claire. Okay, so I just want to say, you know, everyone's welcome to speak their opinions about any of the property owners in the area, but comments at board meetings don't necessarily represent views of the board. That said, we've had our discussion from community members. We may recognize comments again later, but I want to open up to board discussion now. Eric, did you want to start us out?
So we have this intersection. I do travel this intersection almost daily. And it is a very interesting intersection because on the side, there's a big blind spot for the people who are coming out of Prospect Street onto Iolani Ave. Because it's a curve, it's a hill, and it's a five-way intersection. But most traffic's coming from Prospect or Iolani. You know, the roundabout would be the number one, in my opinion, the number one solution, slowing down and allowing, you know, easy access and keeping the flow going would be a roundabout. However, because Prospect does, is not a dead end street. It does dump out to either Miller Street, keep going. You know, another possible solution would be just to seal off Prospect Street at that intersection at Iolani, so that there's no longer cars being able to come out. Now you have a four-way intersection. That's just not ideal, but I don't know how that would affect the residents in the area. But Prospect Street is not a dead end, you know? So instead of coming out into that five-way intersection, you just seal that off. And essentially, everyone has to, who's on, that uses that intersection has to go the other direction down to Miller to get onto Iolani Ave. And as far as speed bumps versus, you know, there's two different types of speed bumps versus speed bumps. Speed bumps are more severe or louder. Speed bumps, which are a softer type of, you know, mechanism of slowing down cars, is a lot quieter. I advocate for speed bumps everywhere. They are the least noisiest out of them and they are very effective. I actually want one in my neighborhood on Round Top Drive because of the racing that occurs constantly every single night. That's something that I, that's, I can fight for. So anyways, those are my two cents.
Thank you very much for your comment there. We are still open to being able to amend resolutions. So your comment for speed humps and speed bump distinction is well taken. Chuck, please go ahead.
I, I don't have any question or anything, but since this involves, you know, traffic, pedestrian safety, accidents, that kind of stuff. If Lieutenant Segusio is still here, I think he's still here. I just wanted to get any insights that he might have in addressing some of these issues here, this intersection.
Sure, we, we could recognize him at this time. Lieutenant, did you have anything specific to add in this case?
Yeah, I just want the board to know that in regards to that location, yeah, Prospect and Iolani, it's a major thoroughfare during the afternoon rush hour, yeah? So a lot of people, they traverse upward, make that left onto Prospect and grid onto Iolani to make their way to the Poly Highway, yeah? So it's very heavily traveled. One of the other suggestions to, so what we used to do was we used to have a speed trailer at that location to indicate the speeds that people were traveling. The issue to that is the people coming up Iolani, yeah? Because it's coming to that crest, they cannot see the flattened, flattening of the Prospect portion. So it's a little difficult and it kind of chicanes to the left. So it's not like you're going up and it goes continued straight. It's, you got to kind of make a, kind of a meandering left onto that, onto that spot, right? But another suggestion that I would try to do is you can put four-way stops prior to that location. So you can put a four-way stop, if I'm not mistaken, on Miller, Miller and Iolani. And then one on Prospect and Emerson, that'll slow them prior to getting to that location, yeah? I mean, it's just an idea, but just realize that there's going to be concessions everyone needs to make, right? If you guys want to increase safety, then traffic is going to get heavy. You know, you know, one, one person was talking about exhaust fumes. There's going to be concessions on, on both sides, yeah? But if you guys are concerned about safety, then that would be the best bet, yeah?
So could you be one more time? What would you say is the best bet?
To, to, um, yeah, either, either the roundabout, the roundabout is a good idea, but I don't know how much land they're going to need to make that roundabout because there's a roundabout already on, if I'm not mistaken, on Keel Moku and Heyulu Street in the Makiki area. They utilize that location, but I don't know if you guys noticed the center part, a lot of people missed that roundabout, so they just run it over. There was signs indicating that it was a roundabout, but it got taken out because of people just not understanding anything about roundabouts and just taking out the sign. So, and then depending on, on that location too, because you got to realize it's at a crest, right? Normally, roundabouts is in a flat area where all vehicles negotiating that roundabout can see one another. You know what I mean? Because the person that has the right of way is a person to the right. But it's kind of difficult when you can't see that fifth entrance or that fifth portion of the roadway that comes off of Alapi. Now, the five-way stop, it's going to cost a lot of money, right? To, to, to do all the electrical work, to get a five-way traffic light over there. Definitely going to start increasing traffic congestion at that location during afternoon peak hours. Now, the stop sign, yes, that would be the cheapest way to do it. But if you guys are going to consider just a stop sign at those locations, then you guys should also put stop signs on Emerson and Prospect and maybe possibly on Miller and Iolani to stop them one more, one more location before they even get to that location to even reduce their speed even more, yeah?
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. All right, I'm going to recognize Janelle at this time. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Russ. So I have to agree with the lieutenant as a city bus operator. This street, I heavily travel, not in the city bus. So in my capacity as a board member, I'm not condoning the, the use of making immediate changes like with buses and transportation in general. But having preventative measures in place prior to an extensive study being done would probably be the best bet to mitigate issues now. Because even walking up there, I've had to do it a couple of times and there's no sidewalks. And that, that is in itself a danger. Lighting is really bad, especially for evening walks. You know, we want to promote a positive influence in our community, but also try to mitigate the safety issues. The speed hump is a great idea. Doing a roundabout, in my opinion, would probably merge into other people's properties, which would become more of an issue of, okay, now the city has to spend more money on trying to purchase land that they didn't necessarily have before. So in, in my conclusion, I would say that it is a temporary Band-Aid until we can get more of an extensive study done. But definitely both ideas are very vital in order for us to maintain the safety and security of our community as well as understanding what we need to do in traffic situations since that is a heavily driven road during peak hours. Thank you, Russ.
Thank you very much. Let's see if there's any other raised hands online. Don't see any, any other discussion from board members at this time. Nathan, you're recognized at this time.
Yeah, so I think I have a slightly different tack on what Janelle said, which is that, yes, we need to put something in immediately. And if there's already funding for a five-way stop, stop signs, that would be excellent. While we consider more funding for something, for something more permanent. But it is such a dangerous intersection. It's readily obvious that we need to do quite a bit to make it safer, including sidewalks, potentially a roundabout and potentially speed humps. But in the interim, I believe something must be done. So five-way stop immediately while we consider and gather from funding for more later on. Hopefully, in the, in the near future rather than extremely long-term future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Nathan, would you mind taking on sharing for a brief moment?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, I'll time myself then. So I'm not being shared for a moment. So as I had mentioned earlier, the council member and I knocked on a bunch of doors and got some insights. We've heard quite a lot of different and very thoughtful testimonies this evening on this issue. I've also made sure we include in the emails and pretty much every opinion you might expect is listed, listed there. I believe currently, and I could be topped out of this opinion, but really thinking this through, I think the question here and the way I kind of articulated the two resolution drafts, which are not the only options, once again, is yes to stop signs, but also do a study and look at other options that could be effective, either in addition or in substitution, or say no to the stop sign. Do those studies and do those mitigations. It's sort of the way I worded it right now. And I highlight things like the speed bumps, which now I'm completely convinced by Eric should be speed humps. And so if anyone wants to make that motion, you know, I'll be voting for that. So these aren't necessarily perfect. And the question here is, is the board weighing that the tragedy that happened here and the decades of tragedy warrant an action that will have downsides? But with the expectation this will make the community safer? Or do we want to try to hold out for other solutions? And currently I am leaning towards yes to the stop signs. This is the primary reason why. Because as referenced in the newspapers back to 1980s, people recognize this. We have a mountain of studies. And now we need to decide whether the community is leaning towards some type of action, however imperfect, or towards waiting. And I really do respect both options here because there are real costs to the stop signs. And that's why I, I was really not leaning one way or the other that strongly until this week when I listened. in it leaning one way or the other that strongly until this week, when I listened to some of the people talking. And the number one thing I did hear, even among people who aren't in favor of stop signs, is we need action. And so I think the board is best in this case leaning towards this imperfect action while asking for funding. I will highlight, after decades of talking, we're finally getting some action. Why are we getting the action? Um, I believe the council member is being rather modest by not mentioning this, but I believe he is currently Chair of the Transportation Committee. There are nine council members. His district now aligns, and the district lines have changed recently, right? Um, these, so the district lines change all the time. We happen to have a council member who represents this area, who also happens to be a Chair of Transportation. And my final thought on this is with the tragedy in Lahaina and many other costs with interest rates going up, et cetera, we might not always have the funding for action. So I am biased to, not, I listen to all these views. I am leaning strongly and would support action for the simple fact that we have this opportunity right now. We might not always have it, and we can always have the opportunity to get better improvements in the future. Uh, so, uh, I think we're just at three minutes there, so I'll hand it back to our Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ian. Uh, I'm afraid I can't see the in-person side, so I will at least recognize Paul, since I could see his hand here. Go ahead, Paul.
Good. Uh, first of all, I'm, I agree with Nathan and, and, excuse me, Ian. And how can I craft a motion to move forward, at least with the stop signs for now pending further studies if required for a more, I don't want to say permanent, more, uh, useful solution or whatever the right term would be?
Um, Nathan, would you like to respond to that, or shall I?
Uh, you go for it. I was, yeah, you, you have a little bit more.
Okay, I'm taking back over being Chair then. Uh, Paul, thank you for your question. If I understand correctly, it was something to do with, how do you get a motion that would include these things? We currently have a motion pending. It is in the chat. Uh, and there has been discussion about potential amendments in it as well. So you, you could make a motion to amend if it's substantially different at this time.
I want to make a motion or amend the current motion so that we can move forward with the stop signs as soon as possible. So we show that, not, of course, we show action, but show action that should make an immediate difference.
I, I believe that motion's on order, as I believe that's the current motion on the table.
Great, then I'm all for it.
Oh, right, um. Were we interested, few things, were we interested in looking, uh, as a board? This is not me, um, fishing for anything. I just wanted to go back over some of the comments we'd heard that seemed consistent. Uh, were we interested in looking at the, uh, double yellow line, as we were hearing from one of the residents, as a possibility? And were we at all interested in changing the word "speed bump" to "speed hump"? Janelle, you're recognized at this time.
Um, I support the idea of a speed hump instead of a speed bump. As for double solid yellow lines, regardless of what line color they are, unfortunately, drivers are gonna make a decision whether or not they see it or not. Um, unless there's an officer there present, um, typically, in my experience, uh, people will cross lines anyways. So that's what would be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, was that a, um, suggestion or a motion?
Uh, a motion.
Okay, so, uh, my understanding is the motion is to change all instances of the term "speed bump" into "speed hump" in the resolution?
Yes.
Um, in this case, I'm gonna see if we have unanimous consent for this idea, as I didn't hear anyone speak against it. If any, um, before we go to that, yes, let's, wait a second. Yes, sorry, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Nathan seconded. Uh, before I seek, uh, seek the unanimous consent on this, would it meant any members of the public had any comments, questions, concerns related specifically to the distinction between "speed bump" and "speed hump"? I do see Richard Kwanos' hand up, so I'll recognize Richard at this time. Was this about speed bump versus speed hump?
Hey, Richard, if you're there, you're, uh, you're still muted.
Okay, I'm gonna oppose the speed, uh, humps. Because at night, you know, you can come up on those things pretty quickly, not know it's there. And if you're at speed, you're gonna hit this thing, lose control, and that could, so we could be, there's that unintended consequence, uh. Like when I'm on the Poly, I've got to be careful. There's it down Kailua as you're going towards, uh, uh, Kailua Town. There's a series of those, and if I'm not paying attention, I've got a break suddenly as I come across those things. So I'm thinking at nighttime, you're driving up this thing that's kind of dark, and all of a sudden, your car hits this thing and you're going thirty miles an hour. Uh, so I, I'm gonna oppose the speed humps.
Okay, so you're, you're, uh, opposed to the motion to change the word "speed bump" to "speed hump"?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, I recognize Thomas Baldwin at this time.
Just to clarify, Chair, um, my question for my fellow board member is, are they opposed to, because the amendment is not whether or not they support speed bumps or speed humps, it's whether they would rather speed humps over speed bumps.
I just thought that's the same part.
Question of, it, it's not, okay, understood.
I, I also had the same thought.
Okay.
Okay, good. Uh, so we're not able to be unanimous, so we will actually go into a roll call for this amendment, and then we get to the final discussion on whether to adopt the motion as a whole. Uh, so with that, could you please walk us through the, um, the voting process?
Absolutely. Uh, the current motion on the table is, uh, in support of the installation of a five-way stop.
No, no, that's not my.
Yeah, okay, you don't want me to read the whole thing out, just give them.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to drop.
No, I could just do the amendment.
We're just doing the amendment.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So the amendment to the current motion on the table is to amend all instances, instances of speed bumps in the resolution to "speed hump" or "humps".
Okay.
Baldwin?
Aye.
Carson? Char?
Aye.
Gordon? Ujinaka?
Aye.
Kwanos? You're, uh, you're muted, Richard.
Sorry, no.
Thank you. Clink?
Aye.
Kojima?
Aye.
Laka Laka Manapuna? Lead?
Aye.
Nakamoto?
Aye.
Park? Peck?
Aye.
Salasa? Steelquest?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Uh, amendment to the motion is adopted with eleven ayes, one no, and no abstentions.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we have the motion. I'm gonna, uh, recess for one brief moment while I look over the resolution. What?
Another meeting, yes.
Okay. It's, it's true. One second, I'm just scanning it again, too. Yep.
Let me step off a little bit.
How long would you, because we're about to do a vote, I think. Yeah, I think we're about terminally about to do a vote. If you can give it five minutes, I think we're good. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Okay, meeting's back to order, seven twenty-one PM. Um, I'm gonna open this up to some final, uh, board discussion, check back in with the public and other attendees, and then we'll call the vote. Any other further discussion among board members? Okay, uh, for, uh, the public, um, if you've spoken before, I can give one more minute. Otherwise, anyone who hasn't spoken yet, you still have, uh, up to three minutes to speak. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Oh, yes, would you mind coming up? Thank you so much. Would you like to sit down, or?
Oh, okay.
You don't have to.
They don't call me Big Joni for nothing, or Big Mouth.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Would you mind, um, introduce?
Okay. It's been a long, long while.
Would you mind introducing yourself before you start?
I am Joan Davis, Mid-Pacific Road Runners Club. And I've been associated with them since nineteen ninety as a volunteer coordinator up and down the ladder, et cetera. And my purpose tonight is it's not free and twenty-three, but it will be October eighth, forty dollars, because Chantelis is open, and we are finally getting back to our annual ten-miler challenge.
Is this related to the five-way intersection? Is this related to the five-way intersection?
Well, it is. It has to do with the streets.
Is this announcing an event? I mean, would you mind holding that for, uh, community concerns? We're, we're gonna get into that very soon.
Well, you've done.
Just let it follow that. Yeah, sorry, we're just trying to deliberate on the, uh, the.
But that's what I thought.
Yeah, sorry about that. When I did ask for any other public comments, I realized it might have been a little more clear. Yes, please go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Simao.
My name is Walter Simao Junior. I live at seven-ten Prospect Street for the last seventy years. I feel sorry for my neighbors, especially the one that lives at seven-zero-one Prospect Street. That's in the Mackay corner of Alapi, on Prospect and Alapi. That house there is now, was vacant for at least a couple of months already. That's the house that they had that accident that somebody died. And there was a, uh, a black, I think, Nissan parked on the side on, uh, Alapi Street. It was creamed, and there's a big crack on the wall. That's the second or third time, yeah, I know, it's two times. There's a wall on Prospect Street. It had been wiped out. Had to be rebuilt. Years later, there was another accident, and that was wiped out, too. So the poor people that live at seven-oh-one Prospect Street, there were renters. They vacated. And the latest incident in, I don't want my January, February of this year. You should see the people there, but they had a small kid and everything. Gone. So last week, I seen some people, I think they're gonna rent that house out again. But that's been, I don't know how many months. And something should be done there. But then Lieutenant brought out, I think that's a good idea, that's, that location. I have two, uh, every day, people ask me, how do you get out of your garage? I'm the second house from the corner. The seven-oh-two and seven-ten. And, uh, they say, I just say a prayer, and I go slowly to get out of the garage. So I hope there's not gonna be a bump by then, where, where, where I'm gonna get out. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Are you watching? Uh, which, what, what car is that? The, the silver one or the red one?
I don't know, whatever it is.
Yeah, though, I have two driveways.
Mr. Simao, can I just get some clarification?
Yes.
Favor of the first standing, right, five ways off the study in the speed bump? Close or?
I want something done. I don't know how long it's gonna take. It's been, what, over forty years? So surprise me. Okay? So whatever it is, thank you for your time. He knows my family from Hawaii.
Sixth grade together. Sixth grade together. Okay, uh, I'd like to recognize, uh, Claire, uh, for one minute. Claire, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you again, Chair. Um, after listening to all of this discussion, I am discouraged that a lot of people who don't live at this intersection think some knee-jerk stop sign is some great idea. You, you're not the ones who will have to live with it, and we are. And a speed hump on Prospect is gonna become a noise pollution situation. People are already flying over the ones on Kapilani. They're already flying over the ones on Nimitz. Um, you, you can go thirty, forty miles an hour over those things, even in my tiny Scion. Not that I tried it. Uh, I am really warming to Lieutenant Segusio's suggestion of the stop signs not being at the five-way intersection, but at, um, Miller and Emerson to slow the traffic before they get to the intersection, so we have sanity at the intersection. I think that's a far better idea than making this a five-way stop. That's gonna be nothing but stop-and-go traffic and air pollution and aggravated people trying to get home in a stop-and-go situation, or the people on Prospect trying to pull out of their driveways. So I wish the board would just take a, take a beat and realize there's actually been a much better suggestion put on the table, and don't just take what the city's offering. Fight for it. That's why I came to.
Claire, would you mind summarizing your remarks?
Sure, I came to the board for help with this, and I would like some deeper thought and consideration than just knee-jerk, take what the city is feeding us. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Claire. Okay. Um, I believe it's time to call the motion. Um, could you please let us know the number of board members in attendance currently, Logan?
Uh, yes, there are currently. I see twelve members right now.
Thank you, okay. Eric, I know it was a little longer than I had promised you, but we're gonna go into the, we're gonna go into the vote now. All right, uh, let's see, I, I think it's best to do a roll call, but I'm not even gonna ask for a, um, unanimous consent. So let's go with a roll call.
Okay, the current motion on the table is in support of the installation of a five-way stop intersection at Prospect and Alapi Street. Additional traffic mitigations and the study of potential long-term safety solutions with the, uh, included amendments that were made. Baldwin?
Aye.
Carson? Char?
Aye.
Gordon? Ujinaka?
Aye.
Kwanos?
Aye.
Clink?
Aye.
Kojima? Laka Laka Manapuna? Lead?
Epstein?
Nakamoto?
Aye.
Park? Peck?
Aye.
Salasa? Steelquest?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
The motion is adopted with nine votes, aye, one no, and one abstention.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna call a very brief recess. Uh, thank you, everyone who attended for this one. If you, if you want to hear the rest of our, uh, agenda, we do have, I could see some shaking heads already. I really do appreciate, this is, uh, you know, focus meeting, we want to spend a lot of time on this. I really do appreciate, this is a, you know, focus meeting, we wanna spend a lot of time on this. I know this is a really complicated issue. People don't think intersections are complicated, but they are complicated. So thank you so much for sharing your minato. All right, I'm gonna look where, we jumped around in the agenda. Let's take a beat. We're gonna jump back to. Back to announcements. Okay. Yes. So we, so we have announcements, then community reports?
Oh, well. I'm gonna leave this with you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read this in the community reports at that time, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. We had a really big issue to take on.
I know, yeah. It's been a while since I've been to the board meetings.
You know what? Could you put this at the table down at the end? People do pick them up. But I'll go ahead and read this into the rec. By next to? Oh, oh, sorry. Two pages.
Yeah.
I'll make sure to mention that. Thank you for coming.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I see some of the discussions going. I'm gonna be calling us back into the meeting. All right, I'm calling us out of recess. I'm gonna take us back to announcements. At the time of the publishing of the agenda, there was a upcoming, which is now happening, September 17th tour of the community. With Councilmember Calvin Say, we might talk about that a little bit later. Our next regular meeting is Thursday, October 19th at 6:00 PM. Both online and here in person, Makiki District Park. Broadcast of this meeting can be viewed on Elello Focus 49 at 9:00 PM on the first Friday of the month, and again on the first and third Sunday at 3:00 PM. For social media, you can follow us at facebook.com/makikinb. That's NB standing for Neighborhood Board. For archives, you can view all these handouts that we've referenced at the link provided in the agenda and minutes. And with that, we're gonna move on to community reports. Chuck Dewey is Chuck with us. Would you provide, be able to provide us an update on the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Neighborhood Security Watch? Yes, 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 please. I gotta take it out of order then. John, do you wanna quickly give us a quick update on the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization?
Yes, I'm on the committee. They didn't contact me yet.
They didn't contact you yet. Logan, can you double check that he is subscribed to the emails? Is there a way to do that?
I believe so. I can double check on that.
Okay, just so we can double check. Cause I remember seeing one email. I thought I forwarded to you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, Chuck, we would love to hear an update on the Neighborhood Security Watch.
Sorry, Chair.
No worries.
My two partners in prime.
Right, wait, can you reword that for us?
My two partners. They've been pretty busy, and I've been kind of busy. So we haven't had any presentations yet, but we have like two or three pending. So we're gonna be addressing that shortly with the neighboring condos that have requested our presentation.
True.
And I also would like to let you know that Harris and I had a conversation about maybe kind of. Getting together, because he has the patrol down pat, and we got the educational piece. So we're still working on that. I hope you don't mind.
Excellent, it's very good to hear. When you start having presentations, feel free to reach out to me. I'd like to be a part of that where my schedule aligns. I wanna be of the support. Thank you. Any questions for Chuck about the Neighborhood Security Watch? One second, I'm not viewing the webex. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on in the agenda to the City and County of Honolulu Monthly Elected Official Reports. City Councilmember Calvin Say, you're recognized at this time.
I'll be very brief. Yeah, and I'm with my dog. Hold on. I'm sorry, I'm with my two doggies, but you do have my report, and I wanna thank all the board members for those who attended the walkabout. And you do have the report in regards to the different areas of Makiki that we'll be addressing some of the issues. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you folks may have.
Thank you very much. First off, thank you so much for organizing that walkabout. You and your staff, Janelle, Melvia, Brandon, all did a fantastic job. I think Paul Clink clocked us at about four miles in two hours, checking out all the major areas. So thank you so much. Opening up to questions from board, opening up for questions from board members. Chuck, please go ahead.
Yes, Councilman Say, I wanted to know if you had any updates for us on the. I'm not sure in the bill number, but it was the LifeSafe, LSC, the life safety things for the condo with the sprinklers?
At this point, I really don't know, Chuck, but we can go and check if it's what, the city council measure, or is it legislative measure?
I think it's a city council measure.
Okay.
I'm not sure if Chair Waters was, was still deliberating on it.
Okay, well, I've got my two staffers here, Melvia and Janelle, so we can go and check tomorrow on that status of that measure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions from board members at this time? All right, I know the walkabout was recent. I believe Brandon was gonna do some sort of follow-up email. Do we think that might be coming this week? Or, oh, we got it? Okay, never mind. It looks like we do have the message from Brandon about the walkabout.
And there's about six or seven different sites that we did go and visit, which was really educational for me also. From the.
Oh, excellent, we have this wrong.
Yeah. From that Hawaii Electric Power Plant where the, how would you say, all that trash was at their property to. The bridge where we have the homeless. You know, we're very fortunate to visit all the different areas as part of the Makiki area. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. And in closing, I would like to have. Maybe. Janelle, are you there? Or Melvia?
I'm here.
Okay, why don't you share with, okay, why don't one of you share with them the good news that we got this past week? I want to give credit to the board.
Yes, Chair Ross, we emailed you about it. 1421 is officially on the track. We got the resolution introduced on behalf of administration for the condemnation process, so it's officially starting.
All right, for some of the attendees who are just joining us first time, would you give a little more context about 1421?
1421 is a almost decade-long issue in, on Pensacola, and it has been burned down twice and is now. Piles of hoarding and, and trash and waste, and we had to wait to get it to a certain point on fines against the home. And, and we were able to. Start working on a condemnation process. It took some. The city had to go through the due diligence and the due process and contacting the owners, and, and we went through all of that. So now, the, the property was appraised. The resolution is, I believe it's also in the, I added it to the chat. No, I didn't, but we can add it to the chat. And once that goes through, they can officially begin the legal process, which we were told could take about one to two years. But it's officially started, so the, the clock is ticking.
Excellent, thank you so much. So would we have the one or two years to maybe weigh in on the potential county uses for that site once acquired by the City and County? Or should we be weighing in sooner?
I would, I would suggest maybe when the resolution is heard in committee that you guys could, could weigh in.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, I see Richard Kwanu's hand is up. Richard, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Councilman.
Yes.
To the, the city council's good intentions of dealing with condominium. The situation, you know, of reserve, reserve studies and all that. So the bottom line is, it's making living in a condo less and less affordable. We've been put in the situation, and I know you've heard, been hearing a lot of testimony at the city council. Of, you know, onerous reserve requirements.
Yes.
Yeah, so, and on top of that, our condo, we had a fire in 2019. We have 55 units. Our fire insurance went up 10 times. So we're now, with all the different insurances ever to carry, we're at $350,000 a year to carry insurance. And it's, within that period, our maintenance fee has doubled, not just because of that, but that's a big chunk of it. So as the city moves forward, you know, please remember affordability. Yes, it would be beautiful if we could cover all these possible contingencies, what could happen. But just ask yourself, what if the city was put in that situation? What if the state was put in that situation of having to cover all their liabilities and obligations? You know, you'd have to raise, you'd have to triple, quadruple taxes, and it's not gonna happen. And that's what you've done to a lot of condominium owners. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Richard, and we'll follow up with the state also. I believe our, our senator has introduced some measures, but more importantly, you are correct. The bigger issue for, I think, the state of Hawaii and the four counties will be fire insurance for homes. If you don't have any fire insurance, the banks will not give you even a mortgage on a, on a property. And that's the scary part. This particular issue reminds me like what happened with Hurricane Iniki and Hurricane Eva. When we had to create that Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund, that was an insurance coverage, which is Zephyr. And Zephyr is the insurance company that provides the insurance coverage for wind damages. Separate from the other, you know, health, not medical, but home insurance. So I'm aware and very much concerned about it, because, yeah, I think what happened in Lahaina now is gonna increase all of our. Homeowners' insurance in the area of fire coverage. And it is a concern for me. And more importantly, I think we'll have to have the state legislature really look at this particular issue. Because, yeah, if Hawaii Electric goes under also bankrupt, what utility will replace it? I don't know. But that's the discussion, I think, our state senators and state representatives will have to address. But I apologize if the insurance went up based on what the city had done in the past in creating that life, you know. Evaluation system for condominiums. But thank you very much for your insights and your input, and I think the people who are listening this evening should be aware of what's happening also. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Chuck, I know we had a bit of back and forth. Is this a question that can wait till next month or be emailed, or do you need to ask? Do you want it to be public to the public? Will you have a comment?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Chuck.
Okay, Councilman Say, Janelle, Melvia, Brandon, just wanted to let you know, Chair already thanked you, but I, I don't think we can thank you enough for being part of that walk tour, arranging it and actually being there with us. Cause I, I can see how effective that is to actually have you there with your staff, seeing all the things that we see every day. And I also didn't wanna exclude Councilman Delos Santos, too, cause I know he does a lot of things out in the community, even though he didn't do the neighborhood walk with us. I know he's very effective and very present in the community, so thank both of you and your staffs for doing that.
Thank you. And fin, and finally, Chuck, may I just respond? And Janelle and Melvia are listening, and this is for you that I'll, I'll try to get a resolution introduced in regards to painting our curbs red that are adjacent to driveways. That's what he's been always putting, even though there's a policy that we're not supposed to be doing it. It's only for, what was it, only for bus stops, Chuck?
Yeah, it's, it's bus stops and, and, you know, real critical area places on Pensacola especially.
Ah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember. I will look forward to speaking with you again next month.
Month?
We're about to move on to Council, about to move on to Councilmember Tyler DeSantis. Tam, I do wanna flag, it is 7:46 PM. This is why we had a focus meeting, is why we've already done with all of our business, but we do still have to get through reports. So I do ask if there are comments or concerns that can be emailed that don't need the full board's attention? If it does, and I do respect that, if we can keep it brief. All right, with that said, Councilmember, please take it away.
Hi, so it's me. So it's Robin. I apologize. Councilmembers off island, so it was, it was, it was great to see them, but, right, so I shared our September newsletter in the chat box. And we also have a park cleanup coming up. It, it will take place Sunday, November 12th at Peter Buck Mini Park. So I've also put a Google form in there for anyone to sign up if they're interested. And I just wanted to thank Chair Ross for letting us participate in the leaf littering the other day. It was very great to go out in the community and spread the word on this board meeting tonight. And I appreciate the healthy discussion that we've, we've all had, and, and in passing the reso, so I appreciate everyone's patience. But I'm here, if anyone has any questions, I can answer or take back to our office. Thank you.
Robin is far too nice about that. I apologize that you were pressed into service along with the entire staff, but we did cover 200 doors, so thank you so much. Recognizing questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, thank you very much for the report and the comments, and for your help with getting through all of this. All right, we're gonna move on in the agenda. I believe we're now at resident and community concerns. Because of Sunshine Law, concerns not on the agenda can maybe be presented, but no board action can be taken, limited to three minutes. Does anyone have anything to share? Maybe we could just get a brief wave from a commissioner, from the Neighborhood Commission, who joined us this evening? Can I give us a brief wave? Thank you very much for joining us. Is there any big commission items that you wanna share?
Not at this time.
Okay, sorry. No worries. Just wanna recognize you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, Patrick's been, by the way.
Patrick's man.
Thanks.
Um, all right, I will briefly share, we did have someone who was in attendance kindly, but had to leave in a little bit. We do have a 10-mile run coming up in Tantalus. They have an obligation to let the Neighborhood Board know as a part of their permitting process. Tantalus 10-mile challenge, 6:30 AM, October 8th. It's gonna be about five miles up some of the roads. It might interrupt some traffic on that day. Potentially starting as early as 5:45 AM. Don't have any comments on when it's likely to end, but I did wanna flag that for everyone in attendance and those listening. Seeing no other resident or community concern, we'll move on to state elected official reports, starting with Governor Josh Green's representative, Jay Cunningham.
Most of the governor's reps are all.
Understood, absolutely understood. Then we'll move on to Senator Carol Fukunaga.
Aloha, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm gonna be very brief. You have received my newsletter earlier in the week. We sent it out on Mondays and also provided a copy of a flyer for an Alwaye Watershed Community Discussion that we held at Washington Middle School earlier this week. In my newsletter, I, my report, rather, I did highlight some of the responses we have received, primarily from Makiki residents. You know, of the people who have participated in our online survey regarding community issues. It's very impressive to see that Makiki residents have participated in a very large way. I don't wanna spend too much time on the specific areas of concern, but they are, you know, homelessness, crime, et cetera, that have been brought up repeatedly. And so I look forward to our follow-up as we kind of get together with city and state agencies and our elected officials. And then finally, I did wanna focus on one area that I think is gonna be a really good area for us to get additional funding and. for us to get additional funding and, uh, external assistance on. We had a fire on Tantalus, um, Round Top in the Manoa Overlook area, and this was on August twenty-third. Uh, and as a result of that fire, both Mayor Blanchardi and I know Governor Green and his staff have been very concerned about the, uh, kind of dry grasses conditions that we have. Partly in other locations on Oahu, like West Oahu and the west side. But within our region, the Tantalus Round Top area and Punch Bowl is particularly, uh, vulnerable and has been identified as a high-risk location, uh, for city and state agencies. So we have, uh, done some preliminary scoping. We're looking forward to, uh, getting more involvement from neighborhood boards and community. And, um, with that, we are actually looking to be able to, um, partner with a number of organizations that are working in our region to assist in, uh, making a lot of the area safer. Finally, I did wanna respond to, um, Richard Kowano's questions. You know, I know that he, um, raised concerns about reserve requirements. Reserve requirements have been required under state law for the last twenty-five years. Part of what we did, um, at the state legislature this year is shift and include fire safety improvements in reserve requirements, so that we can provide a longer timeframe for people to be able to finance and plan for those kinds of requirements. The concern that, uh, Richard, I think, is really referring to, though, is that because the city council and city administration adopted the mandatory fire sprinkler retrofit back in twenty eighteen. If your property has not passed its life safety evaluation process yet and you haven't, uh, installed fire sprinklers, or you haven't committed to install fire sprinklers. Insurance, um, providers are raising rates in a very, very big way. So we, um, are working with Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. They did undertake a survey with all of the affected condo properties earlier this summer. And I believe that most of the Makiki Punch Bowl, uh, condominium properties have responded to that survey. So we're looking to have the department help us bring insurance premiums down and to provide relief as well as working with condo properties and their banks in being able to obtain financing for the necessary, uh, improvements. And so one last thing that I wanna, um, uh, also mention is that the Council Bill fifty-six was just introduced uh, yesterday, and this is a C-Pacer, uh, measure that has been worked on between the state administration and city, uh, administration over the last several months. And what this legislation would do is potentially make it possible for condo associations to be able to use this type of financing to, uh, qualify for much lower interest rates on loans to help finance, uh, fire safety improvements. So with that, I am happy to respond to any questions and, uh, hopefully, I think for, uh, Richard. I hope that we have answered some of your concerns, uh, and if not, happy to speak with you further offline.
Thank you very much, Senator. Um, I'm not, any questions from board members at this time? Any, uh, yes, please go ahead, Chuck.
Just a comment to you, Senator Fukunaga. Thank you again for being such a champion for looking out for the condo owners as far as the L S E is concerned. Much appreciated. I know you, you have endless efforts extended to all of us.
Thank you. But hopefully, we will be also, we will, I hope, I hope we will also be able to continue working with city council members because that new legislation that was just introduced may provide an additional means by which we can help finance repairs and upgrades.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from any other attendees? Uh, hearing none, Senator, it sounds like a lot of the discussion, what you're soliciting for feedback from the public and potentially neighborhood boards on are related to fires, both condos and wildfires. So if there's a role in neighborhood boards, perhaps a joint meeting of some of the surrounding areas where you highlighted increased danger. Uh, just have your office be in touch with me, maybe that's something that the board can have a focus meeting on in the future.
Certainly, happy to.
All right, uh, thank you very much for your report. We look forward to seeing you again next month.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Representative Della Al Bellotti's office. Tom, are you with us?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
All right, thanks. Um, in the interest of time, let me just cover, uh, two things real brief. Uh, as we all know, uh, the world changed on August eight with the Maui fires. Uh, of course, the devastation of Lahaina, uh, and not ignoring at all, uh, some of the up, uh, up-country areas uh, there in Kula and Olinda. Um, the reason for bringing this up especially is that, uh, the focus of activities here at the legislature overall, uh, have, uh, changed in terms of the great addition of work uh, in order to try to address some of the immediate, uh, and, uh, transitional relief efforts uh, necessary particularly to deal with the Maui situation. Uh, the House of Representatives has set up six interim working groups. Uh, and, uh, let me just go through the list real quick. Environmental remediation, food, water, and other supplies, jobs in business, schools, shelter, and wildfire prevention, which certainly has been a major topic at different parts of tonight's meeting. Uh, Representative Bellotti is a member of the Shelter Working Group. And the, uh, specific effort, uh, is to evaluate specific topics related to the Lahaina wildfire and make recommendations for appropriate legislative, uh, action. Uh, especially immediate issues that require temporary or transitional relief. These working groups are supposed to, uh, prepare a draft report by the beginning of November and provide a final report to the legislature, uh, by mid-December in order to, uh, provide that time, uh, to craft legislation, et cetera. Uh, it's, uh, opening day for the twenty twenty-four legislature, uh, is January seventeen. Uh, that's barely three and a half months away. Uh, so with everything else that was already going on, uh, of course, uh, tons more activity. Uh, unfortunately, in order to deal particularly with, uh, the situations on Maui. Uh, the second thing I wish to, uh, note, uh, and I'm kind of surprised in one sense that either Robin, uh, or Councilmember Dos Santos Tam, uh, didn't bring it up earlier. Uh, but as an open public meeting, uh, focusing really more on Papakolea area. But, uh, next week, Wednesday, September twenty-seven, at six thirty P M, uh, for about an hour and a half uh, at the Stevenson Middle School Cafeteria, uh, Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam, Representative Della Bellotti and Representative Jenna Takinauchi are sponsoring a quote-unquote Papakolea Listening Session. In other words, uh, in open town meeting, but particularly focusing on that part of the district. In double-checking, uh, that area, uh, just before this meeting. Um, and, uh, John Steelquist, another element for our consideration of looking at the external boundaries or perimeter of, uh, the Makiki Neighborhood Board is that for the Papakolea area, there's only the little sliver of Kalawahini that is included specifically in the Makiki Neighborhood Board area. So it's only Kapahu Street, uh, Kamala Lehua Place and Ha- Le- Lelea Place. Uh, that's actually in your district. So you got a little bite of Papakolea, uh, but, uh, there is so much other activity uh, with that portion of the community, uh, that affects the schools and the rest, uh, of our area. So again, everybody's invited to, uh, this Papakolea Listening Session on Wednesday, September twenty-seven, six thirty P M. Uh, at Stevenson Middle School. Okay, let me wrap it up there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for your report, um, and for reminding us about that upcoming town hall. Um, do we have any questions from board members at this time? Seeing none, do you have any questions from any other attendees? Seeing none, Tom, thank you very much for your report. We look forward to seeing you Wednesday or next month.
You got it. Thank you, Chair.
All right, uh, do we have, uh, Representative Andrew Garrett with us this evening? Okay, we'll move on in the agenda. Uh, board business. I've been told we do still have quorum. Uh, there's filling a vacancy. We do have one vacancy. For Sub District One, residents interested in filling a vacancy must bring current proof or residency to the board meeting or contact our neighborhood assistant, Logan. Is anyone interested in filling this vacancy at this time? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to consideration of board budget. Uh, we did have our, uh, treasurer, unfortunately, have to leave, but he has been in touch with us, and he's working on a budget. We passed rules last month, which would require a budget proposal or outline by September thirtieth. I did wanna bring items of consideration for reimbursement. Uh, a part of going around and handing out the walk pieces required some graphic design and it required printing costs. Uh, I put a folder called Invoices Submitted by Chair Ross. So I would ask the board to consider reimbursing me for ninety-four dollars and twenty-four cents for printing. And in addition to that, eighty-two dollars and fifty cents for graphic design. I did pick out a graphic designer who offered us a phenomenal rate of thirty dollars an hour. If you've done graphic design, you might recognize that this is a pretty good rate. Um, so I'll put that before the board for consideration. We have to make a motion, or how do we vote on this? Well, we've never done this before. Logan, you wanna tell us what happens?
Um, so, yeah, you guys are welcome to, to come up with any ideas on how you wanna spend your, uh, the thousand dollars allotted, uh, per board. But, um, anything that you guys do, uh, pass still has to, uh, get approved by the, the N C O. So even if you guys pass a motion, depending on how the funds are used, I'm, I'm not too sure, I'm not familiar about the reimbursement.
Okay.
But since it is for outreach, I, I imagine that it would be, it would fall under again.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to reimburse Chairman Ross for the full amount owed back to him.
Seconded. Well, I guess if we're specific and we reimburse it for, you know, like the hundred seventy-something dollars and something cents.
Uh, apparently, the N C O is gonna be reviewing all of this. I have two points of, uh, information, questions for Logan before I recognize anyone else. One, do I have a conflict of interest in chairing a motion related to my own reimbursement? Two, am I precluded from voting on any such motion?
Uh, I don't see why you would be precluded from the vote, just because, uh, it's the board's funds and you're a member of the board, regardless of who is the one that submitted the invoices.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I can't speak on it. Uh, I'm not an expert on this stuff. I have to follow up, but just, uh, that'd be my initial say.
Okay, so should I hand over chairing to Nathan Char?
If, if you, if you think that'd be appropriate, then.
Uh, Nathan, would you mind taking on the chairing of the meeting for this discussion?
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so, uh, we motioned and seconded, so I believe the, it's on the table. Uh, it's whether or not we should reimburse Chair Ross.
Open for a discussion?
Yep, uh, I apologize, I can't see whomever is in person. I see Janelle there. Okay, I'll go ahead and recognize Janelle first, and then after that, I'll get, uh, Richard Kowano. So first, Janelle, go ahead.
Thanks. So the question that I have in regards to, before we make a, a vote on reimbursements, do we even get a copy of our current fiscal budget as in accordance with N C O rules? Like, did we get anything from our treasurer a- as for a report?
I guess that's a question for Logan. Logan?
Uh, you're, you're asking if you've received, like, information on, on your board's budget?
Yes, have we had a spreadsheet of what was already spent, like?
So everything that comes with a lot of costs for the board, like, uh, mailings, uh, anything that, uh, you know, that is given to you guys by the board, everything that's, that happens during the meetings, all that is covered by the N C O.
Okay.
So the, this thousand dollars is completely different from that. I believe it's a, I would have to double-check again. I don't know if this is a yearly thing or if it's a one, one-off. But basically, this a thousand dollars is just, just for that, for board community outreach. It's to, it's to allow the board members and avenues to, you know, bring attention to the board, to their meetings and to increase, uh, public participation.
Right.
Vice Chair Char?
Yes.
Um, another question for our neighborhood assistant, um, is this allotment, this thousand dollars, a one-time instance? Where we can say we pointed one instance of public outreach and it's only good for that one instance, or is it for the whole year? I'm sorry, your question is? The question is, once we say we want to reimburse, uh, Chair Ross for a hundred and seventy-odd something dollars, is that all, is that all of that thousand dollars we can spend? Because I remember when I was at the Neighborhood Commission Office, that question had come out, and the answer wasn't clear while I was still there. No, so, uh, uh, great question. Uh, no, it's my knowledge, you guys have the full thousand. It's not like you can pick one thing and then the rest of the a thousand is not available anymore. It's, you guys have that full thousand, and again, I, I can double-check on that, but that's my understanding of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Logan. Uh, Richard?
Yes, I understand this is for neighborhood, you know, outreach. What exactly, where exactly did that hundred and seventy-three dollars go?
Uh, Vice Chair Nathan Char, may I respond?
Yes, I was about to say, uh, I'll let Ian respond to that question.
Thank you very much. It went to the design and printing costs of these half-page, uh, horizontal walk pieces. They are semi-water resistant, I won't call them waterproof, but, you know, they're, they're made a little sturdier, so when water got on them, they wouldn't go bad. Um, Councilmember Tyler DeSantos Tam's office volunteered, and we left two hundred of these on doors of residence. We went to the five-way intersection with five of us. We each took a side, we walked as far as we could in every direction with about forty, uh, on each of us, in order to try to cover the area most affected and to request the, consider coming to the meeting or submit testimony. And I will note that we had, uh, pretty high, uh, in-person attendance, engagement, and finally, uh, testimony submitted via, via email as a result. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much, uh, Ian and Richard. Uh, oh, I see, uh, Steelquist. Yeah, go ahead, John.
I'd like to make a motion if you refer Chair for his line. Uh, the motion has already.
Yes, the motion's already been made.
Oh, how about calling the question now?
Yeah, uh, I was gonna say, is there anyone else, uh, who has any further comments? Because I can't see, uh, that much of the in-person, unfortunately.
Sorry, there's not that many of us left, but there's no one, uh, there's no one at this time, I think, that's any comment.
Okay, perfect.
Red face, there's a rogue game.
Yeah, okay, awesome. Yeah, uh, I'll go ahead and we can act on Steelquist's suggestion and call the question. Uh, shall we, since I didn't hear anything in opposition, uh, shall we go ahead and uh, is there anyone objecting or abstaining from this motion? Hearing enough, oh, uh, Richard?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, uh, I guess in that case, uh, Logan will have to do a roll call. If you could, go ahead and lead us in that, please. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so the current motion on the table is to reimburse Chair Ross for the, uh, the graphic designing expense and also the, uh, the flyer, uh, this, this person. Baldwin?
Hi. Logan, any information? Would you need to call a roll call? Like, count the numbers.
It's, it's best just to do a roll call.
Even if it were just wasting time, because we won't be passing motion?
I.
We have one extension, nine attendees. That means the motion automatically goes.
Okay.
Oh, are we, do we, are we barely at quorum?
Yeah, we're barely at quorum.
Okay.
If we just have the one extension, I'll just, I'll just mark that then, Nathan.
Richard, you have something to say?
Yes, you know, Ian, I haven't seen this, you know, the flyer. Is there anything in there that could be construed as, construed as your own political outreach? Is your name on there a lot? Is it, yeah, make me comfortable with that. I haven't seen it. That's my concern.
Thank you for your question. I have two comments on this. One, under the folder of Alapai and Prospect, you can see the entire flyer. Two, worth noting, I am not a candidate for public office, nor do I have a campaign committee. Furthermore, there is information soliciting feedback to myself and the council member related to testimony, all of which has been submitted to the board. But there is a picture of me in every attendee of the August convening, oh, July convening meeting, and that is the only picture of either myself or any board members, as it is to this current moment, the most up-to-date photo of this board.
You know, with that, I withdraw my extension, and I'll vote for reimbursement.
Okay. Logan, I guess we'll run through the question again. So round two. Shall we try for, what do you call it?
So Nathan, if I could just hop in, if you just ask if there's, if there's any other extensions or nays? And if not, then it'll just pass just because of, yeah, it's our work still.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much. Yeah, so are there any other extensions or, or nay votes? Okay, hearing none. I believe the motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Richard. And I'll hand the chair back to Ian.
Thank you very much. We're at 8:13 PM. I think we might run a little beyond our target of 8:15, but we only have a handful of agenda items left. Committees, upcoming meetings. We do have a homelessness committee meeting. I received an email from Member Ken related to this. Do we have any updates on the homelessness committee at this time?
Okay, that's, I'm sorry, that's me.
Yourself, Ken, please go ahead.
Yeah, okay. No, so we did finish a series. We had about four meetings earlier this year. And well, two things. First of all, I haven't turned in any minutes. I was working on some this afternoon, Logan, but I didn't get very far. Yeah, so I'm not sure where we stand right now. You know, it's, I'm not sure I'm going to have the time in the near future to be the chair of this committee with some business things that I got to take care of. I'm willing to serve on the board, but I'm going to not be the chair at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much for that update. We're sorry to hear that, but thank you for your very hard work and organizing the most well-attended committees this board has ever had. So thank you for that.
And Logan, I will try to get some minutes out to you in the next near future, say one month.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that, Richard. Whenever you get the chance, just to be crystal clear, are you, you're stepping down as committee co-chair?
Yes, because we have a, who else is on? Who is the other co-chair? That other, there's another member.
I believe it was Ken Ek, but I may be misremembering. Yeah.
Yes, correct, Chair.
Thank you. So we did adopt rules that would make, I believe, the second vice chair and third vice chair in charge of helping to organize some of this committee-related stuff. So let me think about this, and I'll try to come back next meeting with something on the agenda to kind of work ourselves through this. Okay. Thank you. Moving on. Is there, would anyone like to establish any, oh, pardon me. Do you have any updates you'd like to share?
There have been additional communications on the neighborhood plan revision and revising the allocations of our members. There's not come to any inclusion yet. Still talking about it. The three of us are like.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. So establishment of additional committees, is there any discussion on establishing additional committees at this time? Seeing none, moving on to designation of committee chairs. I'm going to defer on this one. And finally, we get to membership. I cannot quite recall if we adopted this last time. But we do have quorum, so I'm going to do this right now. So no one leave for at least the next 30 seconds. Ken Ek would officially, he put in a request to be added to the homelessness committee and the neighborhood board reorganizing committee. I believe he was already on the latter, but now he's officially, he's putting the application as chair. I can appoint this as long as we have quorum. He's now on the neighborhood board reorganizing committee as well. Next off, we received an application by Thomas Baldwin to join the homelessness committee. So those committees now have membership. If anyone else wants to join a committee, we verify the results of people who apply on this form. And I just put it in the chat, board members and no non-board members can join committees. Let's see, any other procedural things? Nope, that would be it for membership. Next, the approval of the initial convening meeting written summary for video review. We did receive this from Logan. We can either defer on this at this time or we can vote to approve. Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, motion a second. Do we have any discussion or comments related to the written summary? Hearing none, so in the interest of time, I will call the vote. I'm going to see if we can do unanimous consent. Does anyone abstain or vote no? Hearing none, the motion passes, and we have our approval, initial convening meeting written summary for video review. Finally, selecting a date for a new board photo. The last time we had an actual board photo, I think, was all the way back in 2019. So we've had that on Facebook. We've had that on this handful of flyers. Many of those board members are no longer board members, so I think it'd be great to select a date. But hopefully, we can get everyone in person. It makes sense. It would also be a board meeting date. So do we have any proposals for when that might be? Do we want to look at maybe our October meeting?
That sounds good.
Recognize Baldwin.
Chair, if I may, the only you have, yours, I said, put up to select the date for the, say.
Yes.
District. That worked very well.
Okay.
It could be, we'll work to do that again. Both find the best date. So I move that the board create a poll for its members to select the most appropriate dates that we can decide on our own time.
Okay, Logan, do we need a motion for this? Then you take a poll and send it up?
Don't need, I can resend them. I'll resend the motion.
I mean, you made a motion, so.
I will send the motion.
All right, we're going to rescinding a motion. I will send out, if my last is chair, a poll among board members, and I really hope you find a date where we can all come together for a new picture. That is it for all of our business. We did it. We got through. It is 8:20 PM. Motion to adjourn from anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved, 8:20 PM, we adjourn our meeting.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for everyone. I do want to share.
Have a good night.
I will share this in the chat. Anyone who wants to stand for an extra second. Our meeting was covered on KITV4 News.
Yeah, Paul, are you still there?
Yes.
Hey, Paul, can you, do you think you could get me that board member paperwork? Did you get a chance?
Um, was it sent to me again? I thought I did.
Yeah, I sent it probably twice in the past week.
Okay, let me go on my computer right now, bring it up, and send it to you tonight.
Okay, thanks, Paul. I appreciate that.
Stay there. Help me find it. How do I search for it? So I can make sure I get it. Let me, I'm revving up.